Talk about transportation. So this is a special revenue fund and transportation is what it's defined. And then the CIP, we actually have about three sheets, three pages of projects that we outlined here. And so I want to talk about a few of them. Actually, project managers will talk about a few of them. I'm just going to kind of talk a little bit highlight, high level here real quick. But transportation tax, we talked about the old tax. So back in 2000, Proposition 403 initiated the old tax. And that tax ran for 20 years and it ended in 2020. And that tax was defined or identified safety and street improvements. And we delivered projects as such. Some examples of those are the Schweitzer Turquoise Roundabout and currently Beulah University Realignments. So I'm going to say that project is probably the last one of the old tax. So that is, that's moving forward. The new tax, which was initiated under Proposition 419, and that was voted on in 2018. And that was approved and it's going to be a continuation or a renewal of the old tax. And that, that tax would run for 21 years and it began in 2020 and it will end in 2041. So that new tax now is going to be shown on summaries going forward, CIP summaries going forward, five years. So the new tax covers improvements for roadways, pedestrians, bicycles and safety. So these are the premise for the new tax. There are other items associated with the new tax related to technology and signing, acquisition of real estate, necessary real estate and relocation costs. So those are all items related to what the new tax, which is Proposition 419. So under the new tax, we have a few items that are categories. And we're calling those new street projects. An example of that is John Wesley Powell. And we'll cover that a little more in, when we actually go over the projects themselves. We have the street widening project and that is another example is Butler Fourth Improvements. And then we have street operations. Street operations, a project example is the Lockett Fourth Roundabout. And then we have bicycle and pedestrian projects. So this covers a bigger spectrum of 419. And one example that we will talk about going forward is the Schweitzer Canyon Trail. So that's a foot trail, but we'll get a, give you an update on that, on that project. And then the last category is general improvements and partnership. Basically, that's what it is. It's just when we have an opportunity to partner with an agency or with another group, then we dive into this category. And we did use that to help us with the downtown part. We partnered with them and then with that group, with the team, and then we were able to apply for a grant. We did receive it. So that is part of our general improvements and partnership. So that kind of covers the transportation tax, old and new, kind of at a high level. And before we go to the next slide, do we have any, are there any questions?
Clarification question. So was Prop 419, the, I think the phrase was for traffic congestion? Or is that, is there another proposition that was passed? Cause I know one of them was a tax. So for Lone Tree?
Yes, so, yes, thank you for the question. So Proposition 419 was related to pedestrian, bicycle and safety improvements. Proposition 420, which is Lone Tree Overpass.
Okay.
Had language in there for traffic congestion and relieving that on the Milton Corridor and just trying to get that pass in to relieve congestion related to traffic.
There's one clarification.
I think the slogan was congestion relief.
Yes.
So yes, your, your memory is correct.
Okay.
And I think one thing I'm really hoping starts to stick in how we communicate this is when we say street widening projects, I think that there is something that pops into mind about what a street widening is. And I, I really want to start talking about complete corridors. Because this is what these projects are and that's how they were discussed. And that's how they are planned in Proposition 419 is complete corridors. So this is the inclusion of parkways and bike lanes and sidewalks. And it's not simply an asphalt, a pavement widening, that it is a complete corridor, including the infrastructure such as conduit and, and other storm drain that might be, that might be needed for that project. So thanks for letting me interrupt on, on that, Trevor. I'm really hoping that sticks, complete corridors for that.
Yes, that, that was one item that we did talk about was a complete corridor. And that is staff is looking at, the team is actually looking at everything that we can do to make this a complete corridor. And just mentioning what Julie talked about, bikeways, sidewalks, additional widths, and, and just what makes sense to make that a complete corridor. So we do work on all our projects. We do see those, we do work on those. It does relate, it does go back to public input. We do have that time with town, town halls, public meetings, settings with the public to have them comment, talk about our projects. We do make that available. We, we come before council, we present at 30%, 60%, final ones, 90%, CMARS. We talk about GMPs and we just give updates on all our projects to help get that out there for a complete corridor.
Can I ask a?
Yes.
And, and we talk about this all the time and I can't believe I'm asking this question. But a construction manager at risk, can you describe what that means?
So maybe a little bit of background on a traditional hard bid project. So you complete a design and then you advertise it and then you hire a contractor to deliver it. So that's the traditional bid design project. For a construction manager at risk, you start the design, you get to about a 60% level. Then you do a separate contract for a contractor. And you bring them on board. So now you have your designer and contractor team together to deliver the project from 60% to final. And this helps the contractor give information, helps convey to the designer, to the team, this is constructable and maybe this isn't. This can be constructed, but it's going to cost more than having to do it this way. So you get a little more of the actual person who's actually going to construct it. They're the experts and they give advice and they kind of help the project get to a, a better scenario when you actually start construction. Now, the traditional bid or the bid design, you typically get a contractor who is the lowest bid. But with a CMAR, you get a contractor who is the most qualified. So they are the ones that we are going to say has the best scenario, best outfit, best experience that we're going to hire, who is qualified to take us to the finish line. So that's kind of a high level difference between CMAR and hard bid traditional. Did that help?
It did. And, and so the at-risk portion means that the project cost may, may be variable. Because you don't know at time of bid, what the total cost is going to be?
So the at-risk portion, so going back to the traditional hard bid scenario, the contractor has no idea what the design is, working through that, until he actually gets the plans when it's developed and advertised. They bid on what the, that plan set looks like. So there's not much risk to the contractor. But through the CMAR, they're helping with the design. They're going to say, we can do this project based on this scenario, this constructability, the elements there. And I can guarantee this price when we do the project, when we get into construction. So that's the at-risk portion for the contractor. So when we get into construction and there maybe we're having some questions or we're like, well, you helped us in the 60% to the final, that's the risk that you have and we're putting that on you. But then again, there's also, also unforeseen items in the CMAR. So we do have some owner contingencies, we have some CMAR contingencies for items that nobody could expect, unforeseen. Do we want to do one more slide and I can talk about?
So?
Okay, before we actually dive into the projects. So what we have in the five-year summary, we have it outlined in FY '24. So the projects that we're going to be talking about are the Beulah University, Lone Tree Railroad, Butler Fourth Improvements, Lockett Fourth Roundabout and Schweitzer Canyon Trail. So those will actually be in construction in fiscal year '24. There are some projects right now that are sort of getting into construction. We're not quite to fiscal year '24, but we're starting some of those phases there. One project wanted to highlight in planning or design is the John Wesley Powell Extension. So we've talked about that, there's been some discussion, we've seen emails from some residents talking about John Wesley Powell. But that isn't a planning design element for fiscal year '24 and then for the out years. I did want to remind the council and just kind of talk, we, we kind of touched on it already a little bit about a complete corridor, the active transportation master plan. Those components are being integrated into all our projects currently. So everything that we're touching, everything that we're working on as part of the transportation tax, we are touching on the ATMP. And so those projects will, those elements, those components are going to be researched out. And as I mentioned before, we, the team is touching on those. The team is looking into those to making sure they're part of the project and it's a complete corridor. And it's everything that the council can endorse through public participation. Those items are met and included in the project. And it's a completely endorsed project to move forward into construction. In the out years of, of the, of the CIP summary, we have the Lone Tree, O'Leary to Pine Knoll. So right now, that is a section that is not included with the Lone Tree Overpass, but it'll be an extension going a little further. So that's in our out years, which is fiscal year '25 to '28. Not currently being designed or in, in that fashion, but it is programmed. We also have the Country Club to Oakmont Intersection. So these are just items that are in the out years of, of the CIP. But we will touch on those, we'll highlight those when the project managers come up.
Covering tree.
Okay, all right. So Lone Tree Overpass Corridor. You've heard from Christine already, the downtown mile. She is a senior project manager for Capitol and she will give you information on the Lone Tree Overpass Corridor.
Thanks, Trevor.
So Lone Tree Overpass, the scope of this project is an extension of Lone Tree Road north of Butler Avenue that connects to Route 66. And that's the 420 portion of the project. And then we also have improvements on the corridor, which is south of Butler, down to right past O'Leary for a transition. And that's the 419 portion of the project. So 420 was funded in the amount of $73 million and 419 was funded in the amount of $13.5 million. We are currently over budget and the cost that you see, the 109 includes both of those funding sources and both of those projects. The overruns that we're seeing have come with real estate and with construction costs and general escalation. Excuse me. We are working on art beautification funding. Jana is going to be able to bring, I think at least a million dollars to the project to offset some of those costs. And we also have the state transportation funds that Regina Salas was able to procure in the amount of 2.7 to help bring those costs more in line. We are starting construction this summer and because of the agreements with the railroad and with, and with Arizona Materials doing a relocation of that property, we're going to be starting to the south of Butler and working our way up north as soon as we get clearance on, on those areas. Thank you.
You need a real film, I just.
Yeah. And we will be moving forward with demolition next month on several of the buildings north of Butler, several of those homes that we've procured. And yeah, hoping to get to council before the break for our first GMP for the design build. And then, and we'll have a public meeting for construction. So that is Lone Tree in a nutshell. And if you have any questions or?
The, how we came to an agreement with the businesses that are there on O'Leary that we have to take some of their property for. I know that there, I heard on the street that there were some issues with acquisition of some, like the concrete company.
Correct. We are working through condemnation right now with Arizona Materials. And that is in the area that's to the north of Butler, right to the south of the Rio Channel. Right, so that's, yeah, that parcel right there. We are, yeah, we have outside council that's on that and we're looking at relocation. And they've, they've got a site identified in, in town that they can relocate to. We believe they're working with planning on that. And we're also, we're looking at kind of reconfiguring their site and keeping them onsite and operational, you know, as long as we can and working through that relocation process. And that's another reason why we're starting, you know, the project south of Butler, so.
Can you refresh our memories about exactly what the roadway and the overpass is going to look like in terms of lanes and bike ped?
Okay. So it actually runs south of Sawmill down to about here on O'Leary. And this will be corridor improvements from Butler down to here. And it will be two lanes in each direction, so four lanes total for traffic. And then on the west side of the road, there's going to be a separated bike ped facility that has a 10-foot foots and a six-foot sidewalk. And then on the west side of the parcel or of the roadway, there'll be a six-foot bike lane that's separated also off the street and a six-foot sidewalk. And so that is the section again from Butler down to O'Leary. We'll have protected intersections at Sawmill and at Franklin and at Butler.
And we are removing the right, the dedicated right turn lanes.
On Franklin and Sawmill, or no, we don't.
On Franklin and Sawmill will not have one. Franklin, both northbound and southbound.
Thanks, Julie.
That's important detail, I know.
And then on north of Butler, we'll continue. We'll go through the lanes, lane configuration right now is five lanes on the south side of the intersection, five lanes on the east side of the intersection or west side of the intersection, six lanes currently on the north side and six lanes on the east side. And we are still in negotiations with ADOT on that dedicated southbound right turn lane, which could be a separate, like an additional seventh lane on the north lane. And then we have four lanes, each or two lanes each direction, so four lanes for the bridge itself. And then we also have six lanes for returning lanes approaching Route 66. And we won't have a fully protected intersection at 66 because it's, it's ADOT jurisdiction. So it's a little bit different, so.
And will, will people be able to go left or right at 66?
Correct. There'll be two leftbound lanes and two rightbound lanes.
And what does the bike ped look like on the northerns, on the northern stretch to 66?
It continues with that 10 and 16 configuration on, on the west for the foots and, and the sidewalk. And then that six and six again on the east. So it's consistent.
Someone asked me, they indicated that they thought that the bike and ped infrastructure over to 66 was too wide. And they were asking, you know, why do you need all of that space? But it's the same as it is all the way down the corridor, right?
It is, and it, it really supports the new active transportation master plan.
Yeah.
And it, it's just the way that the community really wants to move is to enhance facilities that are off, off the roadway. And it, you know, it, it, and includes the foots, which is a 10-foot foots. And that's standard, you know, through, through town. But it also adds that six-foot separated pedestrian facility. So there's just more room for users.
Thank you.
Christine, I know you've been busy with what will be underneath Lone Tree Overpass in terms of correcting some right-of-way issues and access issues. And I was wondering if you can just spend a little bit of time there because I think it's, it would be of interest, but a lot of good things happening on the properties in proximity to the overpass.
Correct. So we, we purchased this building here, which is, you can see it against our property that's been boarded up. We've also purchased these two homes. And this one will be demolished here in the next month, six weeks. And this one at a minimum, it may be the Fox's house. We've been able to relocate that family into Fox Glen. And then there's Arizona Materials that we're working with that relocation on. This parcel here is not impacted. And then this parcel here is BNSF. So we're working with them on acquisition. And this is also an area for perhaps future civic space for south side. And then this is the Paramount Patrol in parcel that's also owned by BNSF. The Rio de Fly channel comes through here in the future. So they will need, we will need, you know, a swath of, of this area from BNSF for the Rio. And then the remainder will or will not be purchased by, by the Lone Tree project. We're still kind of working through, you know, how the city wants to, to purchase this property overall. Can we afford it? There are private developers that would like to purchase this property also. They've talked to the railroad, so. Does that cover what?
Yeah, and I know there was one right-of-way access issue that we, I thought was getting cleaned up in this process. And I can't remember the name of the, the road.
Loop? Was it the Eldon Loop that we took out?
No, well, maybe, but I, I just know there was one property owner in there who did not have very secured access and was, yeah.
Yeah, this, this property owner here is completely landlocked by BNSF on all four sides. If that's what you're recalling.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, and so this is Gable Street and then this is Lumber Street. And we had, the original scope had planned for this Eldon Loop, which came off the end of Cottage and Eldon and then came, came along as a, both travel lanes and bike ped improvements. The council directed staff to, to really just focus on the bike ped and to remove those, those travel lanes. But Lumber will, will continue to be an access point, Gable will continue to be an access point. And then once we go in and kind of clean up this property with the railroad, that a person will have, you know, artificial kind of, you know, access that's, that's theirs and reliable, so.
And how much room, how, how much space is available to a civic space?
We have the square footage or the acreage, but this parcel is a fish shape here. And some of it will be taken by the Rio de Fly. And so there is this area here. And there's this area that's, that'll be leftover from Arizona Materials, kind of underneath the bridge that has been, it's in the south side plan. So it's generally, that area is what, what has been looked at.
So it looks sizable, I'm looking at this.
I can get you the actual square footage or acreage.
Might as well ask this, it's not really about design. I think that ship has sailed, but just for future reference and just thinking through this, I keep looking at that as shape and thinking it's less than ideal from an engineering perspective or traffic management. It's fine with me, it'll probably slow traffic down a little bit naturally. Just curious if you have any comments from your side of things, a perspective, if that kind of curvature is traditionally frowned upon in road building and, you know, and again, mostly for future reference, I'm not trying to.
Yeah.
Go back in time and.
Can we revisit the Lone Tree?
It's a question that keeps popping into my head. How do I visit it?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. The curvature is completely intentional with this and how we need to match into, to Butler, how we need to stay matched into Brandon Avenue for that access, and then how we need to match into Route 66.
I figured it was more about right, just acquisition of property and our ability to get through that space. But, so it's really truly intentional.
It's about connection and it's also about maintaining the grade of the roadway up and over BNSF and over the Rio. If we were to take a straight shot, I mean, you would be going up and then down. And then that, that grades would, would not be standard, so.
Okay.
I think from the, from the traffic engineer, Jeff related to the curves of Lone Tree, do those currently meet engineering standards? For the speeds that we anticipate?
They do, I think we ended up, I don't know if I need to smoke.
Yeah, please, Jeff, thank you.
Plus, we always like to see you.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah, so the curves ended up, Christine may have to help me, but I think we ended up with a 35 mile per hour design speed, if I'm remembering correctly. So they look at this scale, they do look curvy, but 35 is actually not that slow.
Okay.
So you know people are probably going to go 45. I'm just being honest. Because I sit and watch people go up and down Butler every day. So, and the speed limit is posted, but they don't follow it. Anyway, whatever.
So is the curve to the roundabout, is that a redirection of Lone Tree? Cause I travel Lone Tree a lot, I'm one of the ones that council member Harris is talking about.
She goes 50.
I go 50. So that first green curve, is that, no, 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 back right now. So is that a redirect or is that how the road?
That's already the way.
That's how the road is today?
That's RAI right there.
Okay, good, okay.
Yeah.
All right. I just want to make sure. So I can still go 50.
Right.
No.
Where, where does the bridge start and where is fill?
The bridge is the orange.
Oh, okay, so the green is fill?
So the green is, we're at grade and we start to rise and grade the fill and kind of abutment here. And we'll have retaining walls on both sides of the roadway.
You're done.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now is a great time for a lunch break. It is, I'm just going to say it's 11:55, I'm ramping up. So let's plan on coming back into this room at 12:25 to make sure we're, we're moving forward at 12:30. Does that work for you, Mayor?
Yes.
Excellent. All right, and we will continue the conversation, transportation related and special revenue funds. So see you in about 30 minutes.
Well, thank you.
And food is down the hall, right Stacy? I'm ordering a break vegetarian. Mayor, you ready?
Yes, please.
Okay. Folks online, can you hear us and see us?
Loud and clear.
Well, you missed lunch, it was delicious. Thank you very much, that was lovely. Actually got to sit outside, that was the first picnic I've had of 2023. Wonderful. So to kick off the afternoon session, we're going to try to maintain the energy. It's always hard after we have lunch. Let's bring us off, Greg has a few remarks and then we're going to go back to transportation. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Julie referenced high energy, that was not in reference to me. I just want to give some props here to those who helped orchestrate this meeting. Scott, Sam and the many others at the Public Works. Thank you for your venue, it's always great to be here, it accommodates these retreats nicely. Stacy and your big team in terms of, I know that there's many people, Stacy, involved in pulling this together, but maybe you can, I, I want to recognize you of course, but also Sean Endors for the Good Eats during lunch. And who else needs to be mentioned here?
We had a lot of folks, I know. We had a lot of folks. I know that Stacy Kobar will be delivering some stuff this afternoon. So appreciate her assistance as well. But yes, big thanks to Sean Johnson and Doris. They really coordinated most of our afternoon enjoyment.
Great. And before we recognize them, we'll add to the list IT, who's always involved in the technology, making sure things work. And they, they pulled that off again this morning. And who else need I mention here? Rick?
Heidi Derryberry, her team.
Well, Heidi Derryberry, and I don't, I know she's online today. Heidi, are you with us?
I am.
Heidi, we'd love to see your face once again, but the, the amount of hello effort that goes into this presentation, I mean, Heidi, how many slides in this, in this slide deck today?
Oh, I think it's close to a hundred. So quite a few.
Close to a hundred. And every single slide has thought going into it in a little bit of rehearsal. Heidi and the team had at least two dry runs on this. Julie, you were involved in one of those. So yeah, we're just, we're thanking a bunch of people here, Heidi, and you're on that list. So thanks for being remotely up. Can we give a big round of applause to everybody?
Thank you, Mr. All right. I'd like to introduce Jeremy Geider, Senior, Senior Lead Project Manager with Capital Improvements. We're picking up on special revenue.
Hey, Jeremy. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council Members, Mayor of Mediator, Project Manager at Capital Improvements. I'm here to present today two projects. The first one being the Butler Fourth Improvement Project. This is a roadway improvements project stretching roughly from Little America along the Butler Avenue versus now Heights and improving Fourth Street from roughly Sparrow Avenue down and through the Butler Avenue intersection. It does include intersection improvements, both at Harold Ranch Road and at Butler Fourth. We are currently evaluating two alternatives there, which will be either a signalized intersection or a roundabout. In the event that it is that the selected alternative is a signalized intersection, it will incorporate the protected intersection. So additional features for bicycles, pedestrians and prioritization. Another big part of that, you know, this consideration for bikes and pedestrians is also the, the current cross-section that we're showing on the slide here today. We have already made the decision to remove the bike lanes from the streets to create eleven-foot-wide multipurpose bike lanes or these multipurpose paths on either side of the road, giving separated facilities for both bikes and pedestrians. And those will be throughout the project limits. This project has a small component of underground infrastructure, mostly related to storm, to stormwater. This is downstream of the watershed impacted by the museum fire. And we'll be raising that intersection significantly to bring it up out of the flood, as you know. Currently, it floods regularly during monsoon or other flooding events. This project has been before council a couple of times, about a year ago. Kind of came in and gave a preview about what this project was going to look like. And then back in November, council awarded the design conference versus a nightfall, who we're currently working with for our preliminary design efforts. The number that you're seeing on the screen, the budget, that is FY twenty-three budget number, the current budget number. The draft proposed for FY twenty-four is currently at seventeen point eight million dollars. And this just reflects some general adjustments for inflation and so on. The bulk of this is for construction. Our current schedule is to continue work on design this year, hoping to wrap up design in early twenty twenty-four and get shovels in the ground sometime in twenty twenty-four. We're anticipating this is a multi-season project. So this will, this will go two seasons upcoming. It's about to kick off here as we work through this initial, we're in kind of analysis modeling mode right now. But we will be starting, we have plans to go out. We'll have public town hall meetings. We will visit multiple commissions within the city, including bike pedestrians, transportation. We will be to sustainability, commission on inclusion, active living and others. Ultimately, coming back to city council, hopefully before the summer break, to present the alternatives that we've arrived at, get by and, and give us directions so that we can dive fully into design and keep us on track. And with that, I'll pause here. That's what I've got for this project. Any questions?
I do. You said something about a signalized intersection. Is the intersection of Fourth Street going to have a signal?
That's, it's, we're still evaluating a roundabout versus a signal.
Okay.
So that decision has not been made.
At Fourth Street.
At Fourth Street and Butler. Harold Ranch Road is, is imagined as a roundabout, but that, that has a lot to do with current, how we would route trucks from Little America and them not being able to cut across the median.
And how, what is, what's it going to look like around Little America? The gas stations, black barts in terms of construction? What can we expect in that area?
Most of the construction is going to be within the streets. So we won't really be moving curves or doing much. We may be modifying some driveways and so on, but it's largely going to be the installation of center medias, which will restrict. So we'll be having, we're evaluating where we can allow driveway access and so on, and coordinating with those stakeholders that you just mentioned, mobile stations, black bars, Little America.
And you have acquisition. Do, do we need to purchase easements along Butler or?
We, we will have, a lot of that is going to be driven by the ultimate, like, intersection. Most of those acquisitions are related to intersections. Roundabouts take up a lot more space on corners and things like that. So to be determined, but we anticipate some level of acquisition.
Thank you. Is Harold Road the new, newly developed road between Little America and Fourth Street off Butler? Like, I'm caps Little America and there's that new development and they've got new roads that go up.
It's the dirt road right after the gas stations.
The dirt road?
So if you're leave driving past Little America, the first dirt road that kind of comes off at a slight angle, that's Harold Ranch Road farther down where you're describing where all, you see all the construction activity. That is peak point, which is related to the Canyon Del Rio development.
Okay, okay. Got to get it.
I had some brief comments about the part of Butler from where we're talking about now, towards the west up to St. Beaver. Would this be a good time to talk about that? Or would that be, is that gonna come up later in the presentation today?
I imagine that Martin is, that's probably related to Martin's efforts. And I believe he'll probably talk about some additional phases along that corridor.
Is that later today, Martin?
Yes, a few slots, not, not too far off.
Well, okay, I'll wait.
But the limits of this project are at.
I understand that. Thank you.
Thank you.
The second project that I wanted to present today is the Fourth Locket Cedar Roundabout. This has also been in front of council multiple times. This, the project scope really is about replacing the current signalized intersection as Cedar Fourth Locket with a modern roundabout. There will be pedestrian crossings on all the legs of the roundabout. This is especially important. As you're all aware, we have multiple schools in the neighborhood directly on the corners. We've got other public facilities such as the East Flagstaff Library. We've got CCC directly. We've got North Care or North Country just down the street. So we've, as I said, we've been to council several times. Council had some requests, design tweaks, as we'll call them, at the end, which incorporated pedestrian beaking, beacons on all the crossings and also incorporating Z crossings. And this just causes people to have to take a pause before they can just run straight across the street. Certainly an important consideration, given the expected users at this intersection. As I mentioned, this is, this has been in front of council multiple times for property acquisitions. This is being administered by ADOT. So we have an IGA with ADOT. And so should that IGA amendment need to be updated, we will be back in front of council again to update that. The current budget that's being shown here is also FY twenty-three. The budget for FY twenty-four is at five point three million dollars. The HSIP grant stayed steady at the one point nine. So it's the city share that increases. Those increases, again, there's an inflation factor. Some of the, some of those design tweaks are incorporated in that number. And also just the, we have to acquire a full property on the corner there. Currently, we are, we are actually approaching the end of design. We are about ninety-five percent. We're right-of-way acquisition. So we're making offers on all the, the property needs that we need. This summer, we expect to have franchise utilities go out and do their relocations ahead of our project. So they'll get everything out of the way so that when we come in in twenty twenty-four, they'll be able to just construct without worrying about those conflicts. They are trying to coordinate those relocations during the summer. EPS is one of the ones that has significant relocations and there will be impacts to the surrounding people when they have to do their switchovers from their existing to their, to their new equipment. So we're trying to target that in summer breaks. So it's not overly impact the schools and the other facilities in the area. And we are looking at, like I mentioned, construction in twenty twenty-four. We will start roughly this time next year, hoping to get this all done within one year. And that, that's my update on Fourth Street Locket Roundabout.
Thank you. I'll say one thing I, I wanted to add to that is we are coordinating the schedule for the spruce wash improvements with the schedule that Jeremy just mentioned. There are going to be a lot of impacts throughout that neighborhood. So when that roundabout is under construction, it's really important that we maintain access through Linda Vista. And so we are sequencing and should for some reason, construction schedule slips, we have a backup plan in place.
Yes. And thank you for that reminder. That also reminds me that we will be holding a public information meeting this fall when we've got a better handle on what exactly that schedule, what those impacts are going to look like for how long and so on. Again, lots of schools, lots of facilities in the area. So we'll continue that coordination. And we will be holding an information meeting at the East Flagstaff Library later this fall.
So my question, again, drinking from the fire hose and being a freshman here. When did this project get identified as a capital improvement project approximately?
So this is a Highway Safety Improvement Program grant, so HSIP grant. I believe it was twenty seventeen or twenty eighteen that, that, that applications started. And we are not certified to administer those funds. So that's where ADOT comes in and actually administers for us as a local public agency.
It is, I'm, I'm curious because the timing of these projects to an outsider just seems, you know, ridiculous. And I know that little tweak you were talking about in design, I think I saw on one report that that was almost a two hundred thousand dollar tweak, correct?
It's, it's significant.
And so, you know, I'm just trying to get my head wrapped around like, you know, the process and then the tweaks that we do that have significant impact and timing and stuff. So I just, I just wanted to ask a question so I can start gaining the understanding of our flow.
Thank you.
The, so on the Pine Forest Corner, is the dotted line, is that an easement that we have to purchase from?
The dotted line, that's far, that's removed from the intersection.
Yeah.
That's rectified and changed. So that's actually their building.
Okay.
That's their building. We will be acquiring a temporary construction easement effectively up to the edge of that building so that we can, we don't need it for construction so much, but it's to do the landscaping restoration, tie these amendments into our property.
And I know that they were very concerned about the, that huge tree. Where did that end up?
The huge tree unfortunately is directly in the middle of a travel lane. So there was no opportunity that we were, there's another tree that's closer to their building that we were able to kind of shift around where we widened out the sidewalk and so on, that we are anticipating to be able to save. And then, of course, we're gonna be close to it. And so we're working with them to assure even if, even if it was damaged in some way, that they would have some recourse for replacement.
And the land acquisition is on the opposite side of the road, right? There's a house there.
The east side of the intersection there, right, of Locket and Fourth Street. That is, that is the single-family home that will be the full acquisition. Correct.
Jeremy, were you involved in this all the way at the inception back in twenty seventeen?
I was not. I came on roughly around COVID.
Well, I won't give you a whole bunch of kudos then. No, I really appreciate all the, the through line and the, and the long view that folks have had and the connectivity involved. Can you just quickly remind me what the design elements or the beautification aspects are for the center of the roundabout? And what those conversations are like?
Of course. At this time, that's going to be a separate project. So we have been working with Jana and beautification to talk about that. And are gonna be providing some conduits, some other sleeves and so on. And we've had them in the loop. Another art opportunity is gonna, there's still gonna be a retaining wall on that MEMS corner. That's been identified as a, another likely spot that would be good for.
Just a thought to share out, it, it might be nice to have some of the students at the schools and be able to design something and implement something of MEMS.
Yes.
Painted rocks or, you know, just thinking along those lines.
So that was one of the early thoughts for that wall, that, that's along the MEMS, just have some kind of space for such an effort.
Community College is right there too, and Pine Forest.
Yeah. So you may have seen Switzer Canyon Roundabout. There's a call for, for information artists and so on on that.
Oh, is that still ongoing?
That is still ongoing. And that's kind of how we, we've kind of, particularly with this one, because the funding sources and not to conflate those. But certainly at this point, our general approach with roundabouts is to put in all the stuff that would be needed for any future improvements, coordinate that effort. But they would be separate and the beautification would be a later project.
And will that be Clemback's or Con Cave?
Which part?
Well, the, the, the center of the roundabout. Is it gonna be a hill or is it gonna be a retention base?
Yeah, no, it will be a hill.
Okay.
Just out of curiosity, when we acquire property because we're doing improvement, where do people usually end up? Do they still get to live in Flagstaff or do they have to move? I'm just, I mean, it's not your fault, but I'm just curious.
Well, thank you for that question. So this is, this project has been federalized because of that grant funding source. And so we have to follow all the federal, you know, Uniform Act relocation. So it's a complicated process, but at the end of the day, it involves, we have to get them in another home here in Flagstaff. So they, they have that protection, even if for whatever reason appraisers or the other stuff that goes on with those kind of acquisitions don't line up perfectly. We are committed to, we have to relocate them.
Just curious.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have our Senior Project Manager, another excellent, Senior PM at Capital Improvements, David Peterson. I'm JWP.
Got me for three in a row. So we'll start with JWP. This one has been in front of council four times in twenty twenty-two, various budget retreats, as well as the end of June and beginning of July, when we asked council for direction on a final alignment, which is shown on the slide as the yellow line, beloved before as the salmon line, but has now become yellow. So thank you for your input on that. This roadway is gonna be extending Fourth Street to the north, connecting it to current south end of Eastern Terminus, John Wesley Powell. So we've worked with the large parcel property owners, shown here, there's five, I believe, Cemetery Gibson, Little America Canyon Del Rio, and Juniper Point as well. So they have come to the city with a, the proposition that we discussed back in July to realign the road from the South Fourth Street alignment that was before. We will be before you again in May twice, once at a working session to go over the specifics of what a specific plan is. That's what we're gonna be doing for the next year is a planning effort and a very large outreach public component for retaining that information from not only the neighbors of this area, which has been the foci of what we've been doing thus far, but expanding that to the adjacent community and that community as a large as well. So that the planning effort on that, like most planning efforts here in the city, require a copious amount of, you know, public involvement in that process. So we'll be explaining that in mid-May and then I'll be coming for change order five. I think it's the sixteenth of May to ask for the funding and authorization to move forward that change order. One thing that we'll be having here in the context of Julie getting to this meeting today, crossing the Rio, we're having a meeting in mid-April with the county. uh, we're having a meeting in mid-April with the county to discuss some of the options of improving that crossing. Uh, maybe not so much having a full-on bridge there, but at least, you know, armoring those aprons, extending it out, maybe some riprap or some creative ideas to make that more passable in maybe eighty, ninety percent of the circumstances. Uh, where, and now it's more of a forging effort in some of the larger events. So making sure that that access is granted.
Go ahead, Greg. Can we just, uh, pause on that one for a second and add some things? Uh, that is, if, if it does go through, is and is not part of the JWP project is something that we feel we, the city, can be a part of to help the neighborhood out there with their access issues, which exist now absent any influence at all to JWP. The, the access out there right now is, um, you know, what needs attention. And, uh, Julie, you can give firsthand accounts of that. We're glad you were able to make it this morning, by the way.
Me too.
Uh, anyway, I just wanted to emphasize it's something we're talking about doing pursuant to the JWP project, but not required.
Right. Yep.
Thank you.
And yeah, and part of that change order five might be a simple initial design idea on, you know, what an improved crossing would be, but it's not part of the road. That's correct. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Uh, as, and just for reference, in case you're not familiar with the area, that crossing we're referring to occurs right in here. So this, the pressure here that's hill shaded is the Rio coming through here. Uh, so this is the crossing that has to be forged. Cars are parked on this side and sometimes they were shuttled. I've seen shuttling out there.
In a boat.
In a boat, yeah.
Where is, um, when we, last year when the city realigned this path from Four Street over to what part of that map?
So you can see the alignment between these parcels. So it attenuated down here and it came up South Four Street between these parcels here and then came up and then crossed the Rio again. So we crossed the Rio here versus this wide opening here. And at the time, we didn't have, this was presented by the large parcel property owners of realigning it, which opened that conversation just over two years ago. So before that, this was our only option, uh, through open houses. And council meetings, we heard the opinion of those that are in that area, uh, which is why we shifted the alignment. So it wasn't an option before to say we're going to put it on that large parcel property owners.
It's never that it started yet.
It's not. So we have final alignment before we can go forward with more design. We have to have that specific plan effort, planning effort, having that community input as well. So the, the change order five is really focused on, maybe a good way to see it is putting design a little bit on pause while the planning effort takes over again before design picks up again. Um, and then the total budget, one thing I did want to share is the city's portion is forty percent of this and the large parcel property owners and, uh, those five that are mentioned here are picking up the sixty percent now. So the reason that this is such a large number, forty-five million, I believe if I'm right, Greg or Rich, you can correct me, that the city is planning to front the project to build and construct it and get repaid back by the large parcel property.
Well, the primary, we're having, uh, exploratory discussions, uh, the, the most recent one of which, you know, we talked about, uh, an improvement district and we will explore any and all options uh, to, to see, uh, you know, going forward, what makes sense. Um. And, and a bit of a, a comment on my part too is, um, there's a lot of, uh, things that have come into alignment here figuratively with the property owners, you know, when, as we talk about the previous alignment and multiple impacted property owners, and you look at the current alignment, and it's five large property owners, um. I can't, uh, underscore enough how important that, that move has been towards seeing this prog- uh, project progress. Uh, you know, the complexity of, of doing something like this with a multitude of property owners, uh, some of whom may not be on board with the project. Uh, I don't think we'd be having the discussion right now. I don't know that it would be on the table under the timeline, uh, that it is now. The, it's been fortuitous that the shift in alignment and the willingness of the, uh, property owners, and not all of them are looking to do anything with their properties right now. Uh, this is, you know, an investment in the future for, for some, ID Little America and, and others, I believe. Uh, so it's just, it has been, um, an opportunity and, uh, the city's taken advantage of that. The, the discussions are going quite well. Thanks for letting me share on that.
Thank you for the input. Uh, I did want to take a moment to mention too that we have been working with Open Space. Uh, Vice Mayor, you mentioned Arizona Trail and potential realignment of that as well. So that is in here as well as potentially looking at some places where we can open a corridor or maybe putting it up against some sloped terrain that can't be developed to really increase that what's open space, even though it's not technically just city open space, it can be private undevelopable land adjacent to it. So we are having those talks with Open Space. Martin, thank you. Uh, and also just wanted to share.
Just insert right there. I was going to ask you about this, um, and I know the answer to this, uh, and we've had many conversations about it. This is for public record and public interest and newcomers. Can you point out to us on there where the Arizona Trail currently goes through?
A- approximately I can. So it comes up, so, and it cuts across Cemetery and then it ties into where Babbitt is, yeah.
And goes right by the, the tree.
By the tree. So part of realigning a national scenic trail like the Arizona Trail is it has to be for betterment or enhancement of the trail. So we can't just move it out of the way because it's in the way or inconvenient. It has to be a better alignment for that trail. So better alignment, at least in the design and conceptual talks so far, would be to hug this corridor here along the Rio and have, you know, that beautiful cliff canyon setting of a riparian area versus going through probably going to be developed houses in the canyon. So that's kind of the initial thoughts. Uh, we haven't had any design on that, but we have had a part of our company.
And I just wanted to confirm or hear back from you with an update on conversations with the Arizona Trail Association.
I, um, have we had any additional ones, Martin, from what we've already had?
Uh, no, not, not recently. We, we met with them with pros probably more than a year ago, but we're, we're planning to circle back with them.
Okay, that'd be great.
Yeah. Yeah. We, it hasn't fallen off. There's a lot of, this tree that we've been working on is growing into a very large tree and then we're keeping conversations open with the Arizona Gaming Fish and Corridor Crossings as well. They're there. We just had to figure out an alignment before we can now fine tune things. So.
Thank you. Definitely. Don't forget about them.
Absolutely. Absolutely. This, this project has been possible because of our wonderful partners, both in the city and outside of the city.
And the developers.
And the developers, very much so. And the community that this feeds into. So. Uh, also, I just wanted to share that we're probably hoping to do design, uh, towards the latter part of this year and then hopefully can start constructing with that partnership with the large parcel property owner. So one thing that that partnership also did is expedited the construction of this project, which is a win-win. And I did want to mention, and I know this has come up before too, that it is a two-lane road of facilities, foots and a, and a bike lane o- o- off the road as well, as Jeremy had mentioned, in the other, uh, Four Street as well. It's fun that all these projects are immediately adjacent to each other.
Since we're talking about big picture stuff here, do we have a sense, I've heard numbers, but I'm wondering if you can add or clarify the possibilities in terms of, of housing units that could become available or part of the, the city's inventory over time? What, what is the, the best projection in terms of housing in this area?
I would have to lean on planning. I know Michelle has been doing this a lot and so the numbers that we presented in the, uh, land use framework, which we were in front of council in twenty, October of twenty, uh, that number was higher than we're seeing the numbers of now. I think the modeling is seen down, down as low as four thousand units and I think we're pushing for forty-five hundred.
Okay.
Don't hold me to those numbers, but those are the ones I recall from planning. Michelle can probably weigh in, make null to.
And, and that's half the shortfall that we're.
The high, the high end I ever saw with land use framework, I believe, was in the low seven thousand. And that one went down to maybe the high three thousand. So it is the lower end of mid, but again, we haven't, some of these land, large parcel land, landowners haven't even had any conceptual land development or layouts of how they're going to develop. So that's based on, right now, I believe, planning and I shouldn't speak to anything for planning, but there's plans. Some plans in for Juniper Point, some plans in for Cemetery, Gibson and Little America have no plans and Canyon Del Rio is being built. So half, a little more than half the players have some idea of what densities look like, the others.
With that many houses going in there, is a two-lane road adequate?
Jeff, do you want to?
Yeah.
Jeff, come on up.
So we get to see, garnered a lot of discussion and before we hear from Jeff, I'll share with you that, uh, we, we have heard, um, from loud and clear that the desire is, uh, to, to keep the road profile as minimal as possible, but allow for future expansion. We're looking at bridges in this, uh, project in right-of-way acquisition. So it's being built as a two-lane road. Uh, Jeff can elaborate upon that. But it doesn't, the, the idea of it's widening that at some point in the future is not foreclosed, but it will be a complete street. Uh, we will have all bike competibilities.
Jeff, so two things that will be laid out in such a way that if it ever did make sense to make it four lanes, we could do that.
Or three lanes.
Yeah. And then my second point is Jeff's got a hell of a nice shirt on today.
Yes, he does.
Yeah?
Yeah, but this time it's public.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, yeah, everything is spot on, of course. Uh, it's building, built as two lanes. I think the concept at this point is a large median. So the outside edge is going to get built with those pedestrian improvements and curves and the median could be, um, removed at some point. So, yeah, we don't have a ton of information on the land uses for everything, as David mentioned, but we have the regional plan that helps guide us for what we think will happen with these areas. We don't have set plans in yet. And Metro Plan's been doing modeling for us to confirm or deny two lanes. And we have modeling done, we just had modeling done like a month ago for Butler to try to figure out how that is all going to happen. And Dave Wessel does the modeling. He, and we're still well below, uh, twenty thousand vehicles on this section. Of course, volume, you know, people are going to kind of head to the edges so that the more, the most likely spots that we have to widen first would be here and maybe down here at the lone tree intersections. The middle seems unlikely ever. And even with his build out of this area, he's saying, yeah, we're in good shape. We're just tuned in. So it's looking good.
Oh, wow. Jeff, I know speed. I'm going to come up. Can you stop the trajectory? Speed limit and then we can figure out how fast Councilmember Matthews will go on this when she drives it.
I need drag.
Is that plus fifteen? Yeah, is that what I heard? Uh, I may need help.
I like drag racing, so I see that as true.
Yeah. So this is kind of rural, you know, it's rural now. It's going to move to suburban. There could be even some, could be even some activity centers maybe depending on how things happen out here. If I remember right, I think it's, we're talking posting thirty-five, design speed of forty is what I, what they've been working on.
So that's fifty, fifty-five.
Yes.
Councilmember House, I saw.
Yeah, I saw lots of hands.
I think you're, you beat me. So go ahead.
Um, how many miles is that yellow, the development of JW Powell?
Just over two?
Yeah, it's right around.
It became shorter.
I was about to say and actually be going this alignment versus this one.
Because, and the reason why I ask, and I'm not calculating my speed on this, but just it's, it looked longer in the maps. I was wondering if there were stop signs or yield signs for, you know, people get traction when there's nothing's going down.
Yeah. So this, this exhibit is kind of high level conceptual. We're starting to see, you know, some more refinement in design and we're seeing kind of wiggling of the road a little bit. So it, it definitely will not turn out as a really long straight section. Uh, we're also seeing some development with these guys and I want to say right in here is a fairly major intersection that they're proposing around that at this point. So kind of major intersection here and there'll be other intersections along the way. And, and again, it won't be, if we want to build a straight road like that, nor do we probably want to build a straight road like that for folks that like to go fast. It'll be downhill both ways.
The Lauren Matthews roundabout.
Yeah, yeah. Major intersection here. There'll be another one here that's not shown. It's connecting the Herald Ranch Road ends. There'll be kind of major intersection there. Like there'd be a pretty big intersection there. So there, yeah, there's a lot more detail when we get into this.
Yeah. I was just going to note, going back to Councilmember McCarthy's question about potentially having to broaden that road. I would hope, um, with the potential for increased housing development and, and other developments in that area, that we would look at some of the, um, the various goals and community, uh, plans that are, are happening throughout the city and, and look at, you know, creating multimodal, uh, uh, resources for that area, bus transit and, and other transit options. And I know that, you know, one of the bigger goals is creating those different options for transit connecting different neighborhoods. Um, that would help to prevent the need to, to necessarily expand the road uh, because that was such a major point of contention for this area. Um, but I, I would just hope that we would keep all of those things in mind, uh, as we look at that area and the development in that area to help to meet some of those different goals at the same time.
Absolutely. Question. Um, did Cemetery propose a different route that's close to this one? It seems like I saw a map that had a similar route, but slightly different.
So this is, this is the design that is done with P engineering, al- almost up to the thirty percent design. So the large parcel property owners are also working on a similar design. And that one attenuates and has little inflection points that are different from this one. So that alignment is slightly different than this, what's shown on the screen. Uh, I can't speak to that design because I haven't seen that design. Um, but yeah, they are slightly different.
Okay. So this is a general idea of.
This is what we knew as of last July, but you've seen is probably created and I, I know it was created since July.
Can't believe it's almost been a year since those conditions.
Right. Uh, and one thing I wanted to point out, Councilmember McCarthy, was that the securing the right-of-way for, it, it's nice when you can build out in, then you don't have to expand anything out. It's a lot more affordable. So having that foresight is, is excellent, but making sure that we never have to come back and ask for more rightfully. Which, a great point too, Councilmember House, is, is knowing that when we were working with the alignment in here, we were taking land from people's yards. So those feats made huge difference, whereas for the most part now, we're going through undeveloped land. So an extra, you know, ten feet for a slope easement is not as big a deal when you're not going down something's drive.
Thank you for that.
So David and Jeff, uh, you might have to give back to me on this, but I'm curious, uh, with the forty-five million dollar budget, city share forty percent, um, developers ponying up the other sixty. How does that compare, um, apples and oranges with NIH and the Bula? Cost sharing that we're, we're talking about?
So Trevor will be correct me if I'm wrong, but the city's portion is eighteen million. So with the developers, twenty-seven million, I believe, uh, gets you to this forty-five million. So this is not the forty percent. Forty percent is eighteen million.
Okay. So, um, but the question remains, the percentages, how, how does that, how does that compare with the NIH development happening over off the Bula?
On Bula, Bula NIH is, oh, NIH, sorry, I'm sticking out my, I don't know, I'm only, uh, NIH.
I can maybe start this.
Jeff's got a big smile on his face.
Well, I can start the story. So, I mean, this forty percent comes from the Citizens Transportation Tax Commission, uh, back at twenty eighteen, and this was a rough estimate of how much traffic would be on this road if we built it. And there was no development out. So that was kind of background city traffic. Was about forty percent and the rest of the road would fill up with sixty percent developer contribution or developer trips. And that's how we got forty, sixty split with this. Um, NIH is different because the road, Bula already exists and they're adding to it. So it's two lanes today. They're going to add two more. So they're kind of adding, I mean, if you think of it that way, it's fifty percent. Kind of, but it's all the improvements that are being, they're typically all on their, their dime.
Okay.
But it's, if you think of it in terms of it's already two, you're adding two, it's kind of fifty.
I did mention in the question, there are probably apples and oranges. I was just curious to get a general sense of how they compare project wise.
So I think we have some items I've heard from council, maybe design related, um, that can be addressed in a couple of the upcoming council meetings that you have related to the work session and the council session. Um, is there anything else here on, on JWP that, um, council would like to know related to, to budget?
You just read in the comments.
Yes, there was a, a comment from Dan Folk. Um, I think this was related to Vice Mayor's question of, um, density and intensity of land use and number of housing units. And that will be an activity of the specific area plan. Um, that specific area plan activity and the public outreach component also includes developer engagement and. Um, that specific area plan activity and the public outreach component also includes developer engagement and um, kind of reconciling their desires for what they would like to do with the property that they own and what the city would like to see and um, the economics to support that increased density and intensity of land use.
Yes, thank you, Jeff.
Can we, um, I apologize for getting you off track. Can we go back?
Yep.
I don't know if uh, the entire council is aware of this city parcel, but can we of point that out? Yeah, thanks. Uh, first one, twenty seven acre parcel that would join this. And I, I think this is way into the future uh, discussions as to what the city projects for that parcel or if that's the right location. I think there's always opportunity to be talking about uh, exchanges or swaps, uh, but one way or the other, um, twenty seven acres of vacant land that will soon, or in in the not too distant future, be accessible with uh, utilities and uh, with a new street corridor. Thank you.
Thank you.
It just skipped really fast. There's a delay. My apologies.
I am thrilled to say that after twenty five years, the shovel went in the ground on Monday.
Paper today or yesterday?
It was what?
It was in the paper either today or yesterday.
Okay. It's probably today because I didn't see it yesterday. Yeah, excellent. It's uh, thank you, council. Thank you, community uh, for making this the exciting project come to fruition. Uh, had an excellent redesign to incorporate the bike and pets. Thank you, Adam. Been in back. I feel like we really came out with a really strong project uh, to deliver to our community. Uh, we are working on the, the purpose of this, I addressed several emails uh, coming in the last couple of weeks. Uh, the objective of this was not to relieve congestion on Milton. It is to realign University Avenue with University Drive. So they currently, as you come across here, uh, you have Burger King and Wendy's, there's an offset between the two universities. This project is realigning the two universities. That was identified as a safety problem back early, early two thousands, I think the first transportation tax going on to the corner of money. Um, this one also has underground infrastructure, as I mentioned in the G M P, it's our council back in December. So we have fiber net, fiber optic conduit going in. We have water, we have sewer. Some of those lines are being upsized so it can still better serve the community from what's old, oldest infrastructure now that's undersized. Uh, we also partnered with Mountain Line. So we have a two lane road with two bus lanes as well. And then we have two bus stops here on the north end of Bula. We have the same eleven use shared, eleven foot shared use path that Jeremy was using on Butler and Fourth as well. Uh, so there's a lot of great uh, aspects to this project. Uh, fear or not, not all the trees are being cut in that lot. There was a couple of other emails we answered this week. Uh, they are cutting the swath here, uh, reassuring people that they're not cutting them down to build a highway through there. There's a large cross section because we have the eleven foot shared use on both sides. We have parkways, we have medians, we have bus lanes, and we have the two travel lines. So only twenty feet of that swath is traveled. Um, also just wanted to point out that pedestrian underpass, uh, thank you with our community members and property acquisitions with the ordinances in the last couple of weeks as well. Uh, still continuing to secure the real estate going here, but it's been wonderful working with people that we've been working with so far and their understanding from the community. Uh, we do have a weekly newsletter, news blast that comes out. If you haven't signed up for that, I think it's just news at University Bula project, I can get it to you, but there is a sign up for that. There's a hotline people can call as well. Um, and then also just the support of the design, the final budget. So I wanted to point out that this number here is the total project cost. So we gave the G M P at nineteen point three million. That's the construction cost. So there's two different costs that we see. If you guys are wondering why the cost is larger, that covers things like our permit, management time, it covers uh, you know, developer contribution, which is, this one came in from vintage, so we received the one point six million. That's part of that. We have approximately three hundred and seventy thousand from Mountain Line as well. So there's a a handful of pots that are coming together to make this possible. But just wanted to point that out on if you see the difference between nineteen million and twenty three, twenty one million. So construction will go from Monday through probably late summer of twenty twenty five. Any questions on that front? Go ahead, it's member McCarthy.
Well, it's interesting that we're congratulating ourselves for uh, realigning university. But I guess the obvious question is, how did university get screwed up like that in the first place? And I believe the answer is that City Council moved the street so that Target could have a larger parking lot. That's the history that I, the way I understand it. So I mean, I guess the bigger, the bigger comment here is a lot of times council can make decisions that have implications decades and decades later. So we should be careful in what we do. Thank you.
Any other questions on Bula University?
Oh, we'll point out two real quick that University Avenue gets renamed to Fresca's Avenue, which is the parcel that was owned by the Fresca's family here. Uh, the memory of that thing. Just wanted to point that out.
That's interesting.
What's the name of it again?
Fresca's. Fresca's property parcel is what it was. But Fresca's Avenue is what this was, this is current University Avenue. This is getting renamed.
Interesting. That's kind of cool.
Yeah. All right. And I have been around since the inception of this one, which is in twenty eighteen, we went forth with the design uh, thank you button. On a really critical part of our foot system, this actually connects downtown. So this is the end of Terrace. Uh, the former uh, Cuchina Mexican restaurant near the Lone Tree Overpass is hanging in here. This connects up to the turquoise roundabout going up. So it really connects downtown up to Butler Park, Eldon, Forests, and its trails to the north. Um, trying also to connect with the Lone Tree Overpass when that project was coming into fruition. Letting them know and sharing our plans for this project really early so that we can have, hopefully have, you know, a really strong N A U connection to this trail to get people up to Mount Eldon as well. Uh, so this is a aggregate trail with a couple uh, concrete crossings. This crosses, I believe it's like nineteen different water sheds going across this hillside. We're just almost contouring across this, which is, it's the end of Cherry Hill. So it's a very topographically rich area. Um, and the designer, Peak Engineering on this one, did a great job uh, going through uh, the different contours and different water sheds here. So uh, with that, this does support the active transportation master plan and aligns with the foots trail system as well. The budget on this is two point four million. That's the total project cost. We're anticipating the estimate for the project is at little over two point one million. And the design, it says summer of twenty three, but I'm happy to report as of two weeks ago, the design is complete. And it was, it was completed a couple of years ago, but when it stays around for so long, it has to be updated to twenty twenty three engineering standards. So that process has done, been done. So we're hoping here in the next four to six weeks that we can get this on the street for advertisement. And hopefully the estimate is high and the bid comes in to construct it lower than our estimate and we can easily accommodate the construction of this. So the construction would be uh, fall, late fall, winter, and then going through twenty twenty four, probably fall as well. So we have done this timeframe before, where we'll start project uh, after the monsoon season. And then if we need to do a winter shutdown. This part of the project actually has a lot of solar south exposure. This is probably snow free in most normal winters when you don't have the fifth snowiest winter on history. And uh, but that does change as you go northward as well. So with that one.
Any question?
Yeah.
So you said it's, it starts at the roundabout?
Yep, the turquoise, turquoise roundabout in Switzer Canyon.
And then, um, so does this connect into that, the piece of the dirt trail that seems to go nowhere?
Yes.
Okay.
So if you're, if you're driving down Switzer Canyon, you see the little uh, um, oh my goodness, some toy space and little cotton tails coming out of the little water restoration area across from the Jehovah Witness Church.
Uh huh.
There's a little step up that goes up into the trees. That would be part of the trail. And then the development, the townhomes that right here actually have an easement, foots easement through them that's already cleared and graded for the trail to be accommodated in there as well.
Great.
And then we're hoping it's gonna be a bid alternate, but hopefully it can accommodate uh, this hilltop feeder as well. To go up to Hilltop Road.
That will have some switchbacks.
That one, I think, makes it a record for foots trail grade mark.
Not even close.
Not even close. Okay. I think it's like twelve percent or something. It's steamless. It's, it's a single, people will have to pour by hand to get up there. You can't get driving it quick. That will go in as a, as a bid alternate. So it can't be done now. Hopefully it can be done later and we can still build the trail. There's, there's a, there's a trail there now. So we want to, want to make that at least a little bit more. Is it, it would be a, a critical connection. Yeah. It would be a shame to have people in the neighborhood that close to the trail without a formal connection to it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Josh.
All right. All right. So I am going to finish up the transportation portion of the presentation. These next two projects are, I explained before, are programmed in the out years. And so we are going to move forward with those. They're not assigned. So that's why I'm going to do the presentation for a project manager. So I'll do that presentation here. So the project scope for the Lone Tree, O'Leary to Pine Knoll. So earlier, Christine talked about the Lone Tree Corridor. So it's taking off from O'Leary going south all the way to Pine Knoll. And then it'll have the same elements that the section north of O'Leary will have. Uh, ten foot path on the west side with a six foot sidewalk. The street section and then a six foot path and a sidewalk on the east side. I think I said that right. So it'll have that same scope, that same section, a complete corridor going from O'Leary down to Pine Knoll. Um, the idea there is underground infrastructure will also be accommodated. Will have separated bike lane, bike ways, and again, a complete corridor section. So this also supports the Lone Tree Overpass and the corridor section there. Um, it also aligns with the active transportation master plan. Getting all those elements in there that we discussed, that we think is uh, is important and kind of addresses what we've heard from the community and from the public. Um, our schedule is to be in design in twenty twenty six. And just a couple of other things is we would also consider possibly maybe a small realignment wherever for this corridor, wherever it's feasible. So right now um, coming off of Brendan Homes to Pine Knoll, we have some areas next to the multipurpose fields by N A U. Also, there's a frontage road next to the homes there. So there's, there's, it's some possibility that maybe this corridor could shift to better focus how this part of the, that section fits. So there's a possibility to that, but we will research that. We'll look into that and make that part of, of what the final section will be. Again, this is part of the new tax four nineteen, and this is a street widening category.
Trevor, can you, I think I know where it is, but can you point to the Boys' and Girls' Club there? I think it's the center of that quadrant.
It is right.
Yeah, okay.
And there were a few projects that we completed in this area. We do have the um, as you enter Brendan Homes from Lone Tree, we did do a small, we did a couple of small profit circles. And that was an H S I P project as well, that was about a few years ago. We did some improvements to Arroyo Park, to the baseball field, to the parking lot structure there. We did some infill here within Brendan Homes itself. Uh, we did some infill projects there. Any other questions?
Imagine F D S C will be a big partner related to Kenzie Allen Elementary School, which they, um, I believe that is one of the schools that they are looking to rebuild or relocate. Is that right?
That is correct. So as we start going through the process of scoping, getting this project underway, we'll do some outreach. We'll talk to our stakeholders, uh, speak with them, the agencies, the partners. Make sure we're accommodating everybody within this corridor. The next project is Country Club Oakmont. So this is in the east side of Flagstaff. Um, this section here, we have the driving range. We have the continental baseball field, softball fields. We have um, continental hills, golf course. And this section is Country Cliff, Oakmont, and Old Walnut Canyon Road. So that's the intersection there right now to the south. You have a little bit of a hill that goes up and then you kind of drop down as you continue south. So part of our um, investigation or the scope for this project is intersection control. So we want to look at how we can reduce that hill going to the south and kind of help a little better with visibility. Also, the alignment of the streets, the east and west streets coming in, looking at how that might work. So this will be a complete intersection improvement. And as we've talked about before on previous projects, we will look at roundabouts, we will look at protected intersections, whatever will fit for this area based on the, the surrounding area is what we will move forward with. Definitely be in front of council again with updates, with project design going forward. We will seek that input. Uh, schedule, design in twenty five, twenty five, and then hope to be in construction in twenty twenty six. Um, this is part of the new tax and it is a street operations, part of the category type. So yeah, I think that's it. Any questions on this project?
Okay. Thank you, Trevor.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. We're, we're slipping a little bit on time. Great conversation. And I know we've got a hot topic coming up. Um, multi molder planner, Martin Ince, you are up next. Talk about all things pedestrians and cyclists.
Pedestrian conversation.
Yay, Martin.
Yay.
Thank you. All right. So just a little bit about the um, uh, kind of background, where we're coming from. So we, for pet and bike projects uh, in the capital program, we have two main funding sources. One is the transportation tax, uh, four nineteen. Uh, that will provide an estimated twenty nine million dollars over the twenty one year life of the tax. Uh, but in the first five years, it will provide twelve point eight million dollars uh, for pet and bike projects. Uh, our second source, and I think some of you have heard this before, hopefully all of you, but, but Mountain Line uh, was granted, uh, federal grant called First Mile, Last Mile. Uh, it is a total of six point nine million dollars. Of that six point nine million, five point five is the federal grant and one point four is the local match. So that one point four comes out of that twelve point eight million dollars above. And that, and that's really our, our total, what we're working with over the next five years for pet and bike projects. Um, it's probably a good time to mention, I, Trevor said at the beginning of his presentation, that a lot of the capital projects that we just went through include some pretty significant pet and bike uh, components. And I, I think that's worth mentioning again, and they were described in, in good detail as, as each project came through. Uh, but these are really uh, projects that are crucial to our overall pet and bike networks. And really projects that we are unable to move forward on, on our own. Uh, our own mean, I, I mean, as a pet bike project. For example, we have identified the bike lanes along Butler as a priority for more than a decade. Uh, but it was really a project that we were unable, unable to take on ourselves and add those bike lanes. So now that the roadway project moves forward, uh, we get really good bike facilities and and uh, it closes that gap um, and meets that need. Very similar with the Downtown Mile. We have a couple of underpasses, the Florence Walnut we've had funded and designed for a number of years, but because of railroad restrictions and and requirements, we were unable to move forward on that on our own. Um, the Downtown Mile makes it, makes it possible for us to do that as well. So I, I think that's important. And really, when we think about implementation of pet and bike projects at an infrastructure, infrastructure level, uh, there are kind of three legs to the stool. Uh, one of them is the, the capital program for pet and bike projects uh, in and of itself, which we're going to cover in the next couple of slides. The second one, of course, is the bigger capital projects that we have, like the Reunited Flag, the Downtown Mile, Lone Tree Overpass that, like I mentioned, fills in significant uh, portions of, of our network. And then the third one is development reviews, so private, private development. And we really need to rely kind of equally on those three things to help us build complete networks. So we're always uh, kind of in, in the loop and, and watching as, as projects progress to make sure that, that we're getting our uh, pet and bike infrastructure that, that's built as part of that. And more recently, with the council's help, we're getting really, really good pet and bike facilities. And more recently, with the council's help, we're getting really, really good pet and bike facilities compared to, say, 15 or 20 years ago. So we've, we're upping our game. That's really exciting. So if you go to the next slide, for here, I just wanted to give you an idea. So I know some, there are some new members of the council, but we've gone through kind of a long process to identify the projects that we want to build and then to prioritize them. So it's, it's kind of spelled out here. We started a while ago with inventories of, of what we have and what's missing. We tried to develop the idea of complete networks. We've broken into a couple of different categories for pet and bike. Sidewalks, bikeways, foot trails, and then a couple types of crossing. And we've been talking about this at the Transportation Commission and the Pet and Bike Committees for a number of, a number of years. The actual formal prioritization process is kind of outlined a little bit there on the right. We, we took account of attractors and generators, so what are the things that make people more likely to walk or bike, or, or things that they're more likely to walk or bike to? Social factors and then kind of need and functionality. This is a bit of an oversimplification, but that, that's the general outline of it. All of it, the process and the projects that we identified and their priorities are included in the active transportation master plan. So if you're really curious, you can go through there, through that document and see how, how we got to this point. We, we of course are not done. This, this gets us to this point where we can start talking about capital projects and, and making requests and building things. But we need to review this process every few years to make sure that our priorities are, are still accurate and adjust as necessary.
Martin, this is the right, right me? And I know we're not talking about maintenance, but when you talk about inventories and stuff on bike and ped paths. Like I live off Lake Mary Road and I go up Lone Tree and the asphalt bike and, and ped paths are got all these bumps on them, zippers. And, you know, and, and so people like on Lone Tree, you've never seen someone on a bike on that path, they're on the road, which doesn't have a bike lane because it's so, it, it hasn't been maintained. So is that part of the master plan to, the stuff that we've already built to maintain it so it's used? Or just we have it built, so we say that we have it built because people are getting off those paths because they're so bad?
Yeah, no, you're correct. That, that path is in bad shape. So three, three levels of, of answer to the, to the maintenance question. First, we're doing our best to build projects that require less maintenance. We try to, we may spend a little bit more upfront on them, but hopefully the, the return is that they're, they're more maintenance-free. Like David mentioned, the Switzer Canyon project, that is more expensive than usual because we have a lot of drainage concerns and, and we, we want to take care of that now so it don't become a problem later. So that's one level. The second level is, is we're starting to look at, at some capital funding to address persistent or ongoing maintenance problems. And in fact, we'll see in a couple of slides that we have, we're starting to set aside money to, to specifically address asphalt trails because that's becoming kind of an issue. We also have another piece in the budget that addresses kind of spot improvements. And those can be enhancements, but we also intend for them to be, to correct issues, drainage issues, erosion, other surface issues, long trails and other places where we know there are problems and they, and they're going to require a little bit more money to fix ahead of time. And then the third part is a little bit more esoteric, but it, it is really thinking about how we do maintenance of pet and bike facilities. And kind of, you know, taking that back down to, to base level and thinking about how we can do it more efficiently. If it takes additional resources, if we can, if we should do it differently. Some parts relate to how we collect information and how we, we go about prioritizing things. So that, that's kind of the final step, also worth doing, but sometime in the future. We, we recognize, I think it's been pretty clear, council priority for the last couple of years, that we want to be able to maintain the facilities that we have. And, you know, your, your example that people aren't using that trail is significant. That, I mean, that, that tells us that there's an issue there, right? We have a facility and it's not.
It doesn't make sense to build more of the same people over a couple of years, aren't any. Use those new ones because we're not maintaining them. It's one thing to build that space, but then it's got to be usable.
I figured it was the, the grade of that portion, if I'm picking the same part of the foots that's along Lone Tree by the college.
Lake Mary Road too, that has the same issue, the same solutions that people, and I stop them, not every day, but I'll say, hey, why are you on the street? And it's, that complaint is always, it's just too dangerous on the path.
Yeah, yeah. Our, our immediate response to that, the issue with asphalt trails is we stopped building asphalt trails a couple of years ago and took it out of our engineering standards.
Good.
For whatever reason, they just have not held up well. And we have, you know, I think nine miles have existed that will be to for us.
Glad you did that.
Okay. So here we dive into the, into what's actually in the capital budget and we start with the general category. General planning item in the, in the capital budget includes some staff time. This is part of my position as well as an engineering tech in the transportation section. I know that there has been discussion, and you'll see more, that about additional positions in transportation related to active transportation. This line item is not found. That is a different discussion, and I think that's coming up in.
April.
Well, April retreat.
Later in April.
Later in April, yeah. So that, that's, what do we call it? Is that the operational budget versus this is the capital budget?
It will be in follow-up. It's going to be part of a big discussion about organizational staffing. We'll, we'll call that one out for a particular discussion with council because we know it's of high interest and that we look forward to having that discussion.
Okay. Thank you, Greg. I just wanted to be clear that these positions are, are something different than that conversation. The, the next bullet is for project pre-design and this is a fund that we have set aside to do concept plans or 15% plans for some of the more ambitious pet bike projects that we have. The idea is to get a little bit more information about how they might work, what riderway or easements we would need, if there are constructability issues and what they might cost. And that information gets us a little bit further down the line with implementing those projects and really sets us up to take advantage of grants when they, when they become available. So for example, we've spent some of that money in the past year on pre-design or concept plans for protected intersections along Butler at Beaver and San Francisco. And we have another slide, I think that's coming up right after, to talk about that in more detail. And well, we've got a couple of years of funding in that and we'll use, we'll try to draw that down as much as possible and then, and then see after that if, if there are still opportunities to use that money. A third bullet point is for a vision zero action plan. So a planning effort to look at a safe streets or a vision zero concept. And then the last one is, is actually a live link to our online planning map. And I'm going to skip that for now, but come back to it after the rest of our presentation on projects. So if you go to the next slide, that is the one on, this is the one on the project pre-design that we've worked on so far. So we're wrapping up the, the concept plans for the two protective intersections. We're just beginning work on taking the bike lanes along Butler and moving the curb and raising the bike lanes up to the level of sidewalk. You can see here the bike lane. The bike lane is at street level now. This curve we move out and the bike lane would get raised. And that extra vertical change provides some level of protection for bicyclists and eliminates a good number, not all, but a good number of, of those issues that we've been having with the current configuration and separated bike lanes.
Can I ask a question, Martin? How would that impact snow removal and would it? I'm guessing it would make it easier, but if it's still raised, what does that do in terms of plows and moving that snow and, and sweeping up centers?
You know, one of the reasons that we settle on this configuration, not only here, but on other road projects as well that, that you heard from some of the previous presenters, is that it gives us 11 or 12 feet of, of concrete that can be relatively easily plowed. Like we have the equipment, we have the know-how to, to plow those facilities. So that, that kind of addresses the issue with Butler now, where we need a specific piece of equipment to fit into that, that tight space. Now we can do this with a pickup truck or a front end motor. There remains an issue of where the, where the snow gets stored once it gets plowed off, off this facility. But if you think about the Butler corridor, there are actually some landscape areas that the city purchased as part of the right of way, way back then. And so one of the things we want to look at in the concept planning is can we use those areas more efficiency, efficiently to create parkways and other places to store that snow. So we help eliminate that. On a new construction, we should have parkways and, and a place to store that snow as part of initial design. So we're kind of addressing.
And do we currently have the funding to do this?
Maintenance-wise?
No. Construction-wise?
No, we don't. Part of the, we know, we have a cost estimates for the two protective intersections, about a million each in, in round figures. I don't know what the raising the bike lane will be. We'll, we'll get that cost as part of the estimate. It'll be more than a million.
Probably.
However, you know, there are, there's lots of federal grant available now. There are specific programs that we've been looking at that might be good candidates for, for this project. This, this project might be a candidate for those grants. I'm optimistic.
Can I narrow you down a little bit because Butler has, has been so problematic for bike and ped for so long. It's a topic that everybody talks about. Optimistically, when do you think we could actually see this coming into the construction stage?
So this is a really good discussion and I would, I'm already doing time marks.
So can you pick it up?
Maybe some very quick feedback from council as to how you would view this as a priority. It is not currently funded. We have an idea of costs. You're getting an array of projects today that are very, very prioritized. But we don't want to take away the conversation from these projects, which have been the subject of a lot of the email communications of late. And, and I know the interest is high, but perhaps some quick feedback from council would be appropriate. That's okay.
I'll just start it off saying with all the projects that are being built off Butler. You know, the, the traffic and the issues are just going to increase quite rapidly with housing construction and everything else. You know, it just seems like this would be one of our top projects, I would think.
Just last night, I sat through about an hour and a half of discussion on this exact subject at the bicycle committee meeting. And my thoughts are that there seems to be a strong consensus from staff that the system we're having now with the curbs and the candlesticks or whatever they're called, is not working. It's very inefficient maintenance-wise. And a significant thing I picked up on last night, Martin was there of course, sitting across the table from me, was that if we keep the candlesticks, that, you know, the current setup right now, the maintenance costs per year are very significant. So to me, that translates to if we could do the project where we raise the, the bike lane up to the sidewalk level, that would actually save a lot of money in the long term because we wouldn't have to do all that very expensive and, and very frustrating maintenance and, and snow removal. So in my mind, that's a reason to move this up. Now, there's been a lot of pressure to do the, the Butler project and also the protected intersections at Beaver and San Francisco. In my mind, I think we should push the Butler, raise the bike way project up as a higher priority. In other words, if we only have so much money, spend the money on Butler first and then not do the protected intersections yet. Maybe do them, but certainly the Butler project is higher priority. So that's kind of my thoughts on this. If we can get the, if we could find some funding to do the Butler project, that would really be efficient. The bicycle committee, by consensus last night, felt very strongly that they don't want to just take out the candlesticks and put it back to, you know, an open street with a white line or whatever. That they want to keep that the way it is to, until we can do the race, the bike lane. So in my opinion, this all boils down to let's see what we can do to do the final project, save the money on maintenance and maybe save some money by not doing the protected intersections right now and put Butler as the high priority. Does that kind of make sense or questions?
I think it makes sense.
Thank you.
I can follow up on that. I hate to admit that Councilmember Matthews, when you started talking, I thought you were going to conclude the opposite. Then you did. And I really deeply apologize for that. I was very excited to hear the conclusion that you came to. I think it follows closely with what Councilmember McCarthy's saying. I remember being in the very interesting position of sort of being the tide-breaking boat on whether or not we keep those lanes in place for an additional six months. And I felt it was important to do so because I think something like that needs room to breathe and people need time to get over their, their knee-jerk reactions and their, their preconceptions and experience the amenity for what it is through a variety of seasons and, and contexts. I don't think those candlesticks were working at the time. I thought that, I, I thought the experiment needed more time to, to be conclusive. I come to the same conclusion that I don't think they're working. This alternative solution is incredibly exciting to me and we should definitely make it a priority. I don't know that we need to rob Peter to pay Paul in terms of getting rid of the protected intersections to, to prioritize this. There's probably a little bit of that, a zero-sum game of, of having to, having to choose. But to these, I mean, these are all synergistic and they play off of each other. I don't think it's possible to create the protect, protected intersection after the fact. So it's kind of needs to be baked into the cake in the way that these integrated bike paths should have been baked into the cake originally. And it's, it's a major thoroughfare. I think it's a nice way to transition from a, a very open-minded and, you know, curious, good faith experiment that wasn't working and pivot into a solution that is, makes everybody really excited. That's a nice win for everybody. And it'd be nice to be able to have that, the contrast of the experiment and the solution on people's minds as, as quickly as possible.
If I may, you have a discussion on the bike pilot project, the bike lane pilot project coming your way relatively soon. But thank you for the input. So we'll have more on that topic. And I know the two relate, and in fact, they're almost inseparable to, to have that discussion and not talk about alternatives which we're looking at. I'm hearing from council, what we thought we would all hear, there's a desire to make this a priority and allow us at the budget team, we'll, so you can get at this. I'm not, I'm seeing heads, nod yes. Thank you for that discussion editorial here. This is the fix. The, the bike pilot project was an experiment. And, and we'll have space to talk about the, the good and bad from that experiment. But this is the fix. And I can only underscore everything Martin said. It's, it's safer, but it's maintainable and it's maintainable without having to expend enormous sums of money on specialized equipment and utilizing existing equipment and quite arguably clearing things just as fast as we're clearing the vehicular roadway. Because it really is no different. You're just six inches higher operating. We won't be out there with road graders. Public Works would like to do that, but we will, you know, be able to maintain that, I think, in a much more efficient manner. Looking forward to the discussion. Thank you.
And Martin, just incidentally, according to your diagram, I think 22 travel lanes is way too many. And Martin, just incidentally, according to your diagram, I think 22 travel lanes is way too many. Stupid joke.
Just, just finish off by coming in on vice mayor. Adam Schmoni spent hours discussing with me this elevated bike lane concept, right? We agreed on this over a year ago, so it was already well decided.
Thank you for your thoughts. Just to, just going to conclude that, I hate to be that person, but. We're missing a piece of information so far, which is what, what this will cost. And I said before that it's going to be over a million. That, that's classic understatement. I'm sorry. I shouldn't have said it that way. It's going to be millions of dollars. To do that. I think an important part of our conversation is what that actually is. So as we work through the 15% plans, we'll have better information and, and we will need that, right? To be able to prioritize and know what we can afford and what needs to be moved and started.
Kind of that. So the next step, of course, is do the cost estimate, which agrees with what you're saying. But to put this in perspective, the Lockett Cedar Roundabout is going to cost $5 million. And. I think this project actually makes more sense than that. Not that we're going to trade one or the other, but just to put it in perspective of what the costs are. I think the, I think the thing that really pushed me over the edge on making my recommendation. Is when I saw at the meeting last night what the cost is to maintain. The, the candlesticks and the curves. How much it's going to cost each year? And this doesn't even cause, I'm not talking about snow removal. I'm just talking about what it's costing us to replace the damaged candlesticks and the damaged curves.
And just settle. Flames.
Yes. So, so the amount of cost per year. As long as we still have this approach, that's what pushed, pushed me over the edge. It's like, it's a big waste of money. So admittedly, if you only look one year ahead, it makes more sense to keep the candlesticks financially. But if you think of it in terms of say five years, it doesn't make sense at all. And my, I tend to think of things in the long term. I have long-term goals as opposed to short-term goals. So that's why I'm kind of hard over on this. Thank you.
I don't want to be misunderstood as saying the experiment wasn't worthwhile. Conversely, quite the opposite. I think it was invaluable. And it allows us to move forward with something more robust and, and a, a better solution. Knowing that we've, we've tried other more economical. Possibilities.
It reminds me of a photo out of Ed Abbey's book Desert Solitaire. It can always serve as a bad example.
Thank you for the discussion. I know I got us off track, but this was a very important discussion. So thank you.
Absolutely. And Martin, do you have the information you, I'm hearing from council to make it a, a priority in the budget moving forward? So Martin has about six or so more slides related to other bike and pet projects. So now you just kind of hit the highlights of those slides. Moving forward.
Of course. Thank you. We can move on. So we, this kind of, the rest of it kind of breaks up our projects by category. And so we'll go through them fairly quickly and please, if you have questions about a particular project, let me know. And I'm happy to answer that. I will point out on the foot slide that we do have asphalt repair. We've put it in the capital budget, I think at $400,000 for every year. Really not enough to fix some of these trails, like we need to, but it's enough to get it started. And I think that's a. An effort we'll have to undertake in terms of deciding how we're going to fix them. Which ones are priority and how we're going to pay for that. So that, that's really kind of to come. And I will, I will say one other, one other thing about footstrows. Five years ago, we had this presentation to council. Most of our pet bike program was just footstrows and that was, that was pretty much it. That worked pretty well. Now we have all kinds of other facilities that we're talking about and we're really moving in a lot of new directions. That's, that's very exciting. But footstrows stays, remains back there as one of our more popular, well-used facilities and. Really they're, they're recreational, but they're also a crucial part of our transportation. Systems. That's kind of my pitch to, let's not, don't take the foots for granted. Remember that that's important as well. So with that, we'll move on to sidewalks. And the only thing I'll mention here is that we don't have a lot of sidewalks listed in this part of the, of the budget. This is the part that's funded through 419, but a few slides. Later, we're going to talk about first mile, last mile. There's a lot of sidewalk projects listed there. So that's kind of how that funding got, got broken out. Next slide is on, on crossings and this is sort of the, the same, the enhanced crossings. We only have one listed here, but we have a number of crossings that we're working on as part of first mile, last mile. Two grade separated crossings, they're, the money for the Florence Walnut underpass we've had for a number of years. As I mentioned, we just haven't been able to build it. So downtown mile helps us move that forward. And these, these tend to be very impactful projects in terms of getting people out on foot and on bike, but they're also very expensive. So. We need to be careful, but this is all, these are also opportunities for us to look for grants and other ways to pay for them. Moving on to bikeways.
Can you say more about the Bow and Arrow Tunnel?
Oh, yes.
It's probably not possible if you had to pull something like that up, but just describe it more.
This is a Bow and Arrow wash is behind the community college lone tree campus. And Juniper Point is a private development that is going to develop really on both sides of that, of that tenure, that wash. As part of their development, they're going to do two things. One is build new lone tree road over that wash. And two is build a footstroll along that wash.
Is that where the slutters go? Is that the same?
The bottom of the hill. Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, further, if you take that canyon further back east is where this is located. So when they do those two things, build that road, build that footstroll, we want to have a grade separated crossing for that footstroll underneath that road. And we can't by right ask them to do that as part of development. So we're providing them some money to do it. When it happens. It's much more economical to do it now than to try to go back and retrofit a tunnel.
Amazing. Great.
Yeah, I think that that's going to be a really nice trail and I think it will, will be much better if we have a, a grade separated crossing versus. Requiring people to cross that lone tree. Bikeways is the next project category. And here, a lot of our work is focused on pavement markings. And striping and, and signing. And it's kind of, it's hard to describe all the projects that we have under the category of bikeways, but think of it as we're really trying to. To complete an entire system that is cohesive and comprehensive and complete as much as possible. So we're filling in little pieces here and there. And trying to make it something that really hangs together nicely. And so there's a, there's a whole bunch of projects, way too many to mention or to list individually. But that's our overall goal. There's also a significant component of bikeways under the first mile, last mile. So we'll go to that next. And I, I think in the, in the capital budget. There are only two entries for first mile, last mile, and they are pedestrian projects and bikeway projects. And the amounts that are listed are, is our match requirement that should add up to $1.4 million over the, the life of that grant. But for the next couple of slides, I just wanted to give you where some of these projects are, are located. And what we're working on. So you could see with sidewalks, there's a fairly good number. The next page, we have more crossings. And then on the final slide, we have a number of bikeways. And we're, we're working very closely with Mountain Line. They gave us a lot of latitude really in what projects we selected, but we wanted to make sure that there was a. Connection to transit that we were helping to enhance connections to transit. Really, that wasn't difficult at all. There's such a. There's a lot of overlap between, between that goal and our goal of completing our networks. We have a designer underway on that project. They're, they're just beginning to work on. So the, the initial concept plans. I don't know that we'll be able to build anything. We may be able to stretch some bikeways this summer, but we're working towards the construction season after that.
Martin?
Yes.
Do you have a map of all of these?
I do. And I'm going to, I was going to go actually try a live demonstration of that map, but I think I'll just leave it as a link. So if you go back to the. Really early slides.
You said that there was a live link.
Yeah, if you click that, it will bring up an online map. And that lists all the sidewalks, missing and exist, missing and existing, footstalls, crossings, bikeways. There's also options to let you know what their priority is. So it's listed by level of priority. And then there's an option to list, to show them. Based on when we think they'll be constructed. So it's broken into the first five years. The next 20 years and then beyond 20 years. So those categories. And then, so you can get an idea of what our priorities and what we're intending to build. But it's also useful because you can see how these things interact. Like for example, if I showed you a map of grade separated crossings, some of them just kind of float in space. And if you look at planned footstalls, now those crossings make sense. You can see how they fit into the whole system.
And can you remind me how many of you there are?
Yeah, I think, I feel like Martin's has become a new unit of measure.
This is outstanding.
It's right behind you there. Now I'm.
It is a fantastic database to really drill down on priorities. It's something that Martin's been working. With the pedestrian and bicycle advisory committees on inventory. It is an incredible amount of work. It's a great resource. So when you want to do a deep dive on this and, and find out what, what's. What Martin has in mind and going into this budget and plan. Have, have some fun on the link and the GIS database. And I'm, I'm sure Martin would be more than happy to walk through any of this with, with folks. As you'd like. Good question. I know we're short on.
So I'm just gonna ask, it might be kind of unrelated, but there are a lot of bikers that come up here to train in the summertime. A lot of them from different countries. Do we have conversations with any of those organizations that are bringing people in in terms of? How to use the road properly?
We, we never have, no.
Never have.
Yeah, but there's, there's a thing called the Race Across America round that goes right through the middle of lifestyles and there are racers on the way from Los Angeles.
These are, these are, these are teams that come and most of them are international from, because they used to, they lived on NHU's campus. And then they use the roadways and particularly out down Lake Mary Road and out down Tussadona. On the whatever. Yeah, yeah. I'm just curious as if we ever have any conversations about that. Because that may have some, you know, especially when they're going through the city and some of our trails or bike things. So we're just curious.
Martin, just real quick, on the, the map, is there an overlay or is it just reference the Rio de Flag? You know, path that I know there's some areas where we can walk the Rio de Flag corridor. Is that, is that identified in that map overlay now?
I don't believe so. I think we could add it. Because we, a lot of our footstalls are planned, coincide with washes, major washes, including good parts of the region. I, I don't think it's in there, but it could be added.